Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward and speak about the 102 Christian Street? Okay. We have two people who want to come forward. First of all, are there any questions from the Commission about this to staff? All right, this is to rezone from RS1 to C1 office and institutional. If at this point in time, there's no questions from the Commission, would the first person like to step up? Please state your name as well.
Thank you, sir. My name is Harold Murray, Jr. I live at 6509 Davis Street, Columbia, South Carolina. I live in the community in which this proposed rezoning is to be done. I am opposed to this rezoning because there are multiple problems once this is rezoned into commercial. This particular property is located just off of Farrell Road on Christian Street. When you come down Farrell Road and you turn onto Christian Street, you come directly into a residential community that has both elderly people as well as a lot of young children. There is a store on the corner that's called a gas bar. Many of those children go to that gas bar. If this organization is allowed to become a commercial zone and they put any facility there, number one, they will not have enough parking because this particular property is only about seventy some feet by a hundred and some feet, which means that they will then park on the street. There are no sidewalks, there are no curves on that street, so anyone who is parking will not just be parking on that private property or on the side, they would actually be parking in the street, which would inhibit traffic from traveling through that street. If there's a case of an emergency vehicle and there are vehicles on both sides of the street, then you would also impair the safety of the citizens in the community. If there are children coming to the corner store, they will have to walk around cars and into the street in order to get to that store. That's a hazard. This property is not sufficient in size to accommodate this being zoned as a commercial and allow this organization to construct a building simply because they do not have proper parking that is available to them, and it would be a hazard to the community as well as this is a residential community, and it has always been a residential community, with no commercial businesses that's within the residential properties of that community. So I am against the rezoning because it will definitely jeopardize the safety of persons in the community, and it was not a part of residential. If this organization wanted to have, buy this property as commercial, I think that they should have gotten it zoned commercial before they purchased it, but they got it, it was residential when they purchased it, and it's my belief that it should remain residential.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the zoning commission. I'm Dr. Albert L. Reed. My home residence is in the Greenview subdivision, and I've lived there for a number of years in this community. I believe and understand that our zoned area is primarily for single member family dwellings, a closed type residential community, if you will. However, there are some exceptions for specific considerations that are deemed essential for the convenience of a residential closed type of community operation such as we are. Here, I believe, are several exceptions that I recognize. I hope most people agree. Number one, recreation parks and facilities, which we are promoting, public schools K-12, churches with in-home or in-house kindergartens, corner convenience stores, banks and laundromats, and automotive gas vehicle services. This is what we've approved for many, many years, over twenty-five years, we've talked about these things coming to our community. Now, I vote no for inclusion of a Masonic Lodge, Elks Lodge, or primary temple in our community. I will list several personal major objections for these type of building operations. Number one, these organizations are known to be magnets for large, even statewide conventions and conferences with multiple weekly meetings. Objection number two, their operations often spill over into the weekends, the holidays, all night hours with associated full-time happy hours. Number three, their practices also may include invitations to outside renters for various and sundry occasions. Number four, they are inappropriate for the tranquility of the present adjacent resident homeowners. Number five, they are grossly, there is my chief objection, there's grossly inadequate parking sources and spaces for this type building and operation. This will create serious traffic congestion, it is near a high-volume vehicle lottery, the Farrell Road, it will initiate widespread street parking problems, block homeowners' driveways, and essentially close accessibility to some homeowners in this adjacent area. My final comments, please, and I'm asking the zoning commission to vote no for this zoning change, this zoning change. The reasons in summary, number one, massive intrusion, number two, inappropriate for the area residents, number three, grossly inadequate parking spaces, and number four, it may be setting the wrong precedence for a community homeowner-type residential role. And I thank you very much for your considerations.
Thank you. Before we move on with the applicant, I believe there was a question for staff?
Yeah, for staff, we've heard a couple of comments regarding parking, and I just want the record to be clear, I guess, Brian, I aim this at you, if, let's just, let's just assume this property was rezoned for commercial use, would, would anyone be able to come in here and provide this commercial use without providing the proper amount of parking spaces on-site?
They would have to provide the proper amount of parking based on the proposed use and the lay of the land, for example, if a civic organization wanted to go there, looking at three per thousand, gross floor area, so they would have to build the building landscape or provide parking up to current code.
And I realize, we don't have any idea whether that's feasible or not, I just want to set the record straight because I heard a couple of people mention that, you know, if we rezone this parcel that access, for example, may be blocked, I heard, from some of the neighboring property, and I just want the record to reflect that any potential development would be required to have your on-site parking, and that would not necessarily be the case. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is the applicant here? Okay. Are there any other questions of, for staff from the Commission? I'd like to call for a motion, then?
Can we have just a little more discussion first?
Yeah.
Um, I think this is an interesting case, I'm, I'm sorry to see that the applicant is not here. I don't, don't know what's going on with that, but I do have a few questions for him. You know, I think, as a general rule, we've all stated many times, we're not really in favor of commercial encroachment into a residential neighborhood. This board has not been in the past, and we've many times tried to, you know, side with the neighbors in situations like this, but I bring these, these situations up here because when I was looking at this earlier, I did notice there's a lot of vacant lots in this area, and I just point out to the neighborhood that, I'm not in favor of trying to go against what the neighborhood wants, but I do just say, you know, careful what you wish for here, we got a lot of vacant lots, and you got an existing adjoining property, you know, trying to expand into an existing lot, and I personally believe that with a C3 zoning and a residential zoning, that these are the kind of parcels that provide your buffer between your more intense commercial zonings and your residential zoning. So I just throw that out there, that in my mind, this is something that I think could work, but with the obvious opposition by the neighborhood and the applicant not here, I am not in favor of rezoning this. I just, for the record, want to state that this is the kind of thing that I think is close, this is very close, and I think something like this could be a good buffer for the, for the neighborhood, but if the neighborhood, that again, sitting wants to keep these vacant lots in the area, then I can't disagree with that desire, I'm just not sure that that's proper.
Yep, come to the podium. Has the applicant made any attempt to meet with you all?
We do have a neighborhood organization, and they came to, come, came to us and mentioned that they were, had the intent of doing something of this nature, but it was not condoned by the North Columbia Civic Club meeting, and we have the president of that organization here. This particular lot, there are no vacant lots around it, there's a house on the corner over here, there's a house on the corner over here, if you look at that lot, there are houses, there are buildings, houses in each one of those spaces. So in this particular lot, you have the gas bar that's on Farrell Road, I think that may be what we see in, in the pink on your chart, that piece of property is there, there are houses, all of the houses, there are houses across the street on Christian Street, there are houses on each one of those lots, when you turn to the corner and you go around, there are houses there as well. So there are no vacant lots in close proximity to this particular location, being on Christian Street or on Benedict Street or on Wilkes Road or Farrell Road.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone?
I would, I mean, I agree with what Gene is saying as far as that being a buffer and kind of a good alternative, but without the applicant being here, it's kind of hard to go to bat for it or really speak on it, but I would agree that it sounds like the biggest concern from the homeowners in this area is the parking issue, and I don't think staff in City of Columbia would let something like that be developed without having adequate parking for it, and, you know, I think staff spoke to that as well.
I would agree with Mr. Dinkins as well, and Mr. Stern. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request to rezone 102 Christian Street from RS2 to C1.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion...
I think that may be what we see in, in the pink on your chart. That piece of property is there. There are houses, all of the houses, there are houses across the street on Christian Street. There are houses on each one of those lots. When you turn to the corner and you go around, there are houses there as well. So there are no vacant lots in close proximity to this particular location, being on Christian Street or on Benedict Street or on Wilkes Road or Farrell Road.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone?
I would, I mean, I agree with what Jean is saying as far as that being a buffer and kind of a good alternative, but without the applicant being here, it's kind of hard to go to bat for it or really speak on it.
Yeah.
But I would agree that it sounds like the biggest concern from the homeowners in this area is the parking issue, and I don't think staff in City of Columbia would let something like that be developed without having adequate parking for it. And, you know, I think staff spoke to that as well.
I would agree with Mr. Dinkins as well, and Mr. Stern. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request to rezone 102 Christian Street from RS2 to C1.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is denied. We are now at the point where I need to call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's over.
You got another 15-minute meeting?